Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM, April 2nd, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Garcia?
At this time, we will have the invocation delivered by Pastor Joseph Garibay of Calvary Chapel, Victorville, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Lieutenant Wickham. So, please stand.
Now, before I pray, I would like to thank Mayor Garcia for coming out to the extravaganza at Center Street Park. It was nice to see you there. As it shows that you're not at a distant mayor, but you're an active member and participant in the events of the City of Victorville. So, thank you for coming out. With that being said, let's pray. Father, in Proverbs 3:5 and 6, it says, "Trust in you with all our heart and not lean on our own understanding. You will give us direction, Lord, and make our path straight." So, we ask, Father, that those in this room that have to make those difficult decisions this evening, they first place their trust and heart in you. Lord, we thank you for giving the City Council a servant's heart, actively serving this city and its many residents. Lord, you say in Matthew, "For where two or three are gathered in your name, you'll be with them." So, Lord, we pray that you be with everyone here that is listening. Make your presence known to those that are watching and to those that are actively taking part in this meeting tonight. Give everyone home here safe travels, Lord, as they go home this evening. May their night be a restful one, and may they wake up refreshed, ready to give you glory for another day. Father, we know that you are in control of all things, and we thank you for being here tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. This evening, our City Clerk will join our Fire Captain, Benny Balades. And after that, I will do a presentation of a proclamation to Christian Steiner, Graves of One Legacy, 2019 D&amp;B Donate Life California Month.
I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
That I will support and defend-
That I'll support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
Constitution of the State of California-
Against all enemies-
Against all enemies-
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic-
That I will bear true faith-
That I will bear true faith-
And allegiance-
And allegiance-
To the Constitution of the United States-
Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
Constitution of the State of California-
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely-
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation-
Or purpose of evasion-
Our purpose of evasion-
And that I will-
And that I will-
Well and faithfully-
Well and faithfully-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties-
Upon which I'm about to enter-
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Benny, I'm pleased to present you with this proclamation declaring April as D&amp;B Donate Life California Month in the City of Victorville. Millions of lives each year saved and healed by individuals who donate organs, tissues, marrow, and blood. We encourage all Californians to help save a life. Check yes when applying for or renewing the driver's license or ID card with a D&amp;B. Thank you for your work to save lives in California. Thank you so very much. And this proclamation is presented to you from the City of Victorville. And thank you so much for everything that you- One has been prepared. I don't know who will be accepting it, but after the meeting, whoever's in charge can actually come up to me and I'll present it to them. At this time, can we have our City Clerk present the agenda to council, please?
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes a public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item will be required to fill out a white speaker card located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the City Clerk. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council, not to the members of the audience. In accordance with state law, the City Council may not discuss or take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any items on this agenda that may be a conflict of interest to any council member, board members, or board members should be identified at this time. Do we have anything on the agenda that may be a conflict? No? Okay. So, now we move on to public hearings. Public hearing item number one, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Firehawk Protection EMS, Inc. The recommendation is that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 19-017 at the close of the public hearing. At this time, I will ask our council members if they have any questions of staff, and it's a two-minute time limit. Member Jones, do you have anything?
I have none, thank you.
Rita? None? Gomez?
Why would the City of Victorville need to find and declare those findings and declarations? Legal terms, if so, what weights do they hold? What is the former process of a granting of a certificate of public convenience and necessity? And how does this affect or impact the community as a whole? And my last question is, is this similar to a post certification for police officers?
As to the last question, the post for police officers, I believe the answer to that is no. This is a fairly standard routine item, and through an application process and likely even a business license process, we consider applications from private entities or nonprofit entities, as the case might be, and consider services that they choose to offer that our code permits to be offered. In this particular case, non-emergency medical transport, so different than ambulance or paramedic-related service. This might be transportation for residents, individuals to and from home to doctor's appointments. And our code requires that this type of action be taken when considering these types of uses operating on your city streets.
So, why do we have to find and declare versus any other actions that we do when it comes to city government?
That is a requirement of the municipal code to make findings and determinations in connection with the granting of this kind of certificate of public convenience.
Excuse me. Any other questions? At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards, so I close the public hearing. I need a motion and a second. I make a motion.
Move the staff recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 90-017.
Second.
I second it. Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to consent calendar. You'll have to forgive me, I have the allergy bad today. Items, calendar items C1 through C4 may be approved with one motion unless a council member requests an item appealed for further discussion.
Yes, I have comments and questions on all four items. Does Mayor Garcia invite a motion?
Yes.
I move that the council remove all items on the consent calendar for separate discussion and consideration.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez, to take them all separately. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
If you're waiting on a motion, I move that consent item proved on the basis that there's only four items, and if there's questions, they can be asked without having to take separate actions on each one. So, the motion is approval of C1, C2, C3, and C4.
Is there a second? Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I need to make sure that I understand the motion. So, you're moving approval on all four items on the consent calendar without questions?
After a motion and second, there's discussion of questions, and since there's only four items, if there was 15 or 16, I can see approving it and pulling the other three or four for discussions, but since there's only four, move the item. My hope is, we move the approval, have a second, and if there's any discussion, they can take place individually and then vote on them all.
Sure, typically, but the consent calendar is typically, when they're on the consent calendar, my understanding is that it's a blanket approval unless something's formally pulled, so that's why I made the motion to-
You may be absolutely correct. I'm not sure of the procedure. If they're going to have discussion on it, if they need to be done that way, I'll withdraw the motion. I'm just trying to move this along.
Sure.
Because I don't have any questions, and none of us ever do, but there's questions, so they should be answered.
Are you not improper that you can also do a sub-motion, and yours was a sub-motion, therefore it's always taken first? Was this a sub-motion?
No, it was not. The original motion failed.
Original motion failed, so there was no motion standing. So, my motion was a primary motion.
Correct.
I believe Councilmember Cox's motion was to allow for discussion on his motion on all four items at one time.
Yes.
Oh, at one time?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Because it's one motion, and so there would be discussion on the motion, which would include the four items.
Sure, if the council's fine with that, I'm good with it.
Okay.
So, Mayor Garcia, I believe now would be the time for discussion on any one of the four items for members on the dais.
Anyone have any discussion or questions on?
I have none, thank you, Mayor Garcia.
I don't have anything.
May I make a comment? I did that purposely so that our member could ask the questions. Not sure that this is a public discussion item, since it's consent. Forward-
I don't know what she was doing down there.
Actually, that's a very good question, since we technically haven't removed it from the consent calendar, and it is a consent item. Typically, there's not public discussion, but do we still have to permit that? Correct, yes?
It would seem appropriate to have discussion on it, yes.
But, public comment?
Actually, it should be just the five-minute discussion amongst council members.
So, there is a motion, and the motion failed, but I understand, you're same understanding, but we always switch it up depending on how we want to play the game.
This is the first time I've seen this done.
That's what I've seen as well.
This is a, the motion on the floor right now is to discuss all four of the consent calendar items, not to separate them, I believe, council member. Jones's motion was to separate them and handle them individually, which failed. Mr. Cox's motion was to discuss all four of them at once.
So, if I could just be very clear, so for me, the distinction is whether it's on the consent calendar or not. So, my understanding is it still remains on the consent calendar, but there's going to be a period of discussion, which isn't typical for the consent calendar, but because they're going to be all blocked together that-
Correct.
We're going to do that. All right.
You're absolutely right, it's not typical. However, it still gives the opportunity for council members to ask questions about the items on the consent calendar this way.
And no council members have any questions?
Yes, I do. So, for C1, is payroll demand schedule, I'm requesting that my agenda include the detailed registered and reportings of the payroll demand, Jess.
Would you please slow down so I can understand you? I'm not understanding you, sorry.
Oh, you actually want to listen to what I have to say? Okay.
I need to know what you're saying.
I was reading what I was saying, but if you want me to go slower, I don't know if I'm timed. If I'm timed, I can actually go slower, but if I'm not, I want to make sure it's at the dais. Am I being timed? So, I'm sorry, I have to go plunge through these. So, you probably go back and look at the videos. So, the payroll demand schedule, I'm requesting that my agenda include the detailed registered and reporting of the payroll demands just as it is rendered when I receive the commercial demand schedule. How will the city manager be proceeding with this request?
This is the time for discussion right now amongst council members.
Okay, going along the second one. There's a lot of questions, but I submitted most of them already to the city manager. I'll submit some more, but I'll give you an example of what I'm asking in the budget. For Charter Communications Holdings, there's $8.95 and .30. What services does Charter Communications have with wastewater treatment in this invoice? And would you please explain the purpose? I've already sent some emails, but I need to send you more emails, and this is just the extent for the public to know what it is on item C2 that I was asking. For item C3, the question is, what is the City of Victorville doing besides acknowledging that to be counted is essential for money, is to be poured out into the city? And we need to have state and federal levels be able to be a part of a committee so that we are able to have the count. What efforts in the past has the city done to promote this type of awareness and mobilization for the importance of the census count? Are there current resolutions that the city adopted in the past that I'm not aware of? And is staff aware of how this count affects the city and to what levels? If you would be able to explain that. As an Aleo Lifetime Member of the organization, which stands for the National Association for Latino-Elected Appointed Officials, we have been looking at Norwalk, which is a city in LA-
You have 30 seconds?
And they have been launching a huge effort for April 12th. Other cities have passed resolutions, and we can adopt resolutions as we go with the 2020 census. And I've already given the City Clerk this documentation for resolutions and templates that we can be participatory in this regard. And then for community services, we spent about 20,000, we received $20,000 and $10,000 just in printing fees and library penalty fees. I wanted to know where and how are we spending that money in terms of this item?
Madam Mayor, if you want, certainly you could have the city manager respond to some of those. It's kind of out of the typical agenda item. You're in the council discussion part of the motion right now, but it's up to you if you want to have the city manager briefly respond to some of those.
He can respond to her later.
Okay.
So, we can move on.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to written communications. Item D1, incentives for customer implementation of the energy efficiency program. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 19-019, amending and supplementing Resolution Number 14-040 to provide further incentives to Vemus's customers to implement the energy efficiency program.
Thank you. Are there any questions of council members?
Yes.
None, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Are you going through the line, or are you just going to allow someone to speak?
Go ahead.
So, for D1 is energy efficiency program and more incentives for customers. What's the purpose after the MARS settlement agreement that was ambiguous? Was this type of customer that would affect a Vemus effect? And is this program implemented in other categories such as residential? I know Vemus is only targeted for industrial and commercial use, but what I'm asking, if you don't understand the question, is how are we doing this same type of resolution that would help our residents? Have we spoken or talked with Southern California Edison in terms of doing something of this nature? And, yeah, have there been any talks about potential discounts similar to the ones being addressed in Resolution 14-040?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this program is designed specifically for customers of Vemus, and Vemus is the Victorville Municipal Utility System. And it provides service, in this case, electric service, but it also provides natural gas service out at the airport. But the electric services are provided in two locations, the Foxborough Industrial Park and the Southern California Logistics Airport. Vemus does not have residential customers, and therefore, as the rules and regs governing Vemus exist, the programs that it makes available are to Vemus customers only. I can tell you as much that this energy efficiency program is similar to an energy efficiency program that even Edison is required to have, where they make similarly-natured programs available to their customers with the ultimate goal, as both of us are required in California, to establish a goal of overall or ultimately reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So, in this particular case, what this item is doing is making some modifications to try to make the program more usable, if you will. Examples of types of things that we do with these funds, and backing up, the funds are actually paid for from the user fees of the Vemus customers. So, there's a small component built into the rate that specifically funds these programs. So, effectively, these funds are collected and then reused to help encourage energy efficiency within our customer base facilities. So, the process typically starts with a facilities audit or an energy audit, where somebody knowledgeable, some of this professional in the field of conducting energy audits, will be retained to do walkthroughs of facilities and identify where a customer can cut some of its energy consumption costs by having more energy-efficient type fixtures. And one of the challenges that we've identified over the years is that the amounts available after that energy audit is complete, the audits typically identify quite an array of improvements, and so typically, that array of improvements to help make the buildings more energy-efficient are very, very costly. So, effectively, the incentives offered under this program are intended really to offset that cost to make it easier for the customer to be encouraged to undertake those improvements with, again, the collective goal of trying to overall help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, with that, if there's any other questions, certainly I can-
Yes. Can the city manager recall of the contracts with SCE? Have any clauses that speak to the nature of incentives? Do you recall any contracts or any agreements that we've signed in the past?
The contracts that I'm aware of, particularly relating to Vemus, are interconnect contracts that have nothing to do with energy efficiency responsibilities, but I do believe separately, they have those own responsibilities bestowed upon them and regulated by the PUC.
Okay, so, my question wasn't towards Vemus, it was mostly towards residential customers. So, it's my understanding from what you have just stated that you believe so, but I thought as a local municipality, we have contracts or monopolies with such entities as SCE. But I don't know if I'm just catching you off guard, or you're not understanding my question. I'm asking if there's something that we're doing to help our consumers in the residential sector so that we also incentivize and do these contracts, have clauses that would- You have 30 seconds? Bring something of that nature to help our residents.
Vemus does not have residential customers-
Right, right.
Therefore, it does not have a mechanism to assist the residential customers. Residential customers in Victorville are customers of Southern California Edison, and they do have similarly-natured programs to offer what it is you're asking to the Victorville customers.
And we do business with SCE, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's the contract that I was talking about, not Vemus.
There's-
We don't have a contract with SCE. We don't have any agreements-
Oh, that's not the subject here.
Anything like that. I'm sorry, don't interrupt me. My time is up to 30 seconds, and they're going to call my time. You don't need to.
So, the contracts-
No, she had said 30 seconds. He began speaking, and then she went ahead, and then I went ahead and started speaking.
Answer the question. Answer the question. Move the question. Call for the vote.
I'm sorry. As a point of order, I have to state this. California Penal Code 403(c) provides that every person-
The time is up.
-who without authority of law willfully disturbs or breaks up any assembly or meeting that is not unlawfully in its character is guilty of a misdemeanor. That's called a point of order.
Time is up.
That's what I have stated.
It would be appropriate for Councilmember Cox to call the question, and then we have to facilitate the meeting in such a way. If there's a council member that wishes to continue a discussion, then the calling of the question becomes the motion. There would be a second required and a two-thirds affirmative vote to pass that and end debate.
Right, and as another point of order, we have decorum and professionalism, and when we don't have the modeling of the mayor doing that, that's very disruptive, so that's why I had to call out California Penal Code 403(c) for us to know.
I heard call for the question. Is there a motion to call the question?
Yes.
There is no discussion. I'm done.
So, we need a second on that motion?
To call the question? Is there a second? Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need clarification. What is happening right now? What is this motion? What is it doing? Can you please explain?
Moving on to item D2.
No, we now need a motion on item D1.
We need a motion.
It's all on D1. It's just we ended the discussion, and now we're ready for the adoption.
So, if I may, Madam Clerk, so we just took a vote on the calling of the question. It was, the vote was-
It was, the vote was for one or was it five oh?
I'm still clarifying that one.
Okay.
She clarified what it meant, so yes, go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that was, that's five zero. It passes unanimously. We've ended debate and now we have, we're in need of a vote on the main motion.
Correct.
Okay, now I'm back on speaker cards. Or did anybody else have any questions?
We're looking for a motion on D1.
No other questions? Did you have a question, Jim?
No, I'm going to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 19-019.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now I can move on to item D2. Approval of the Fort Lee Fire Prevention Bureau Professional Services Agreement. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the award of a month-to-month consultant professional services provider agreement to Fort Lee Fire Prevention Professional Services BM19-078 in the amount not to exceed $472,680 per annual cycle and approve Resolution Number 19-020, amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019 by approving additional appropriations in the amount of $120,000.
Thank you. Now, council members, do you have any questions of staff? Two-minute time limit.
Yes. My question is, I recall on many occasions hearing that the first year it would be costly, ultimately saving us 1.1 to 1.5 million dollars savings from having the county fire. However, each time that I see the recommendations from staff to approve for consultation professional services with an organization outside of city's newly elected, newly appointed functioning fire department, it begs the question as to why the city budget has to be amended. What was the purpose of a mid-year review if we need to continue adjusting less than 30 years, less than 30 years, but approximately nine months to approve a fire budget? So in other words, I'm looking at all of this and it's not being clear to me why we moved from one division to another when we're spending and we're supposed to be saving and we're, now we're approving over $120,000 a year for a consultant and over half a million dollars for these other things. So that's very untransparent and it's not helping understand why we keep amending the budget when we already said the first year would be so much and five years we would save this much. So I don't appreciate that. There's no clarification and it's almost like the skate park. We ended up 1.5 million and now it's 2.4 and now it's going to be 4.5 million. I don't see that helping with appropriations of what the council is seeing right now. And that's my opinion based on what I've seen for two, three years ago, two, three years now. So if you can explain, bridge the gaps, that makes sense. If it makes sense to you, please do that.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, and I believe some of this was addressed just recently as we did the mid-year budget and certainly we'll have a better sense of comparable as we get into the upcoming fiscal year budget cycle, which I believe would be May, probably June-ish. But notwithstanding that, as far as transparency is concerned, this is as transparent as it gets. It's right here in front of you. Everything's fully disclosed. And as an example, one way of being able to handle this item would have been to just do internal budget transfers between line items because the funding still exists, the budget still, the budget plan is still intact. And the only thing different that we're really doing here in this particular item is that instead of relying on full-time equivalents, we're within the budgeted line item for personnel, instead of spending that amount of money on personnel, we're creating an appropriation of funds on the expense side for professional services so we can actually use a contract service as opposed to personnel. As to transparency, if we weren't transparent, we wouldn't have brought this item forward because we certainly would have had it within our discretion to just do an internal transfer of funds. But notwithstanding that, it's before you. I think the important thing for you to note related to those comments is staff is still within its plan as previously approved by the council. And it's our goal around budget, the budget, when we start preparing the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, to have even better reconciliation of numbers so that we can show you how we're tracking as to that plan.
So transparency means we are able to track the monies and how the monies haven't changed from the first approval, but we're seeing that they continue to change vehemently, which means it's untransparent. If you have at least one council member up here questioning anything as an insider, that should start to say, what is going on that we're not bridging the gap? And your power, purchasing power is only $50,000 and these are half a million and million dollars, so you wouldn't be able to just slide things in this way. So all I'm saying is if you have one council member questioning how this is being addressed, perhaps we need to have more communication because as it stands right now, that's exactly what I'm seeing.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. On this item, and I know you're going to correct me on this, Mr. Metzler, when I read this at first blush, it looked like we might be a little bit behind the ball in terms of advanced planning on this. Can you help me with that?
Yeah, I can. And certainly I'll defer to the fire chief where I've not done it well enough. But as far as what is being referred to as the Fire Prevention Bureau on this particular case, this was envisioned as a part of the original plan to be among the last things to be dealt with. And as a part of the original plan, the original intent was to actually hire full-time equivalents, actual employees. The leadership of this group of employees would be the fire marshal. And we did conduct that recruitment. We'd like to see a better recruitment, so we chose not to make a selection during that recruitment process. That being said, absent the leadership over what this item is calling the Fire Prevention Bureau, we determined at best, especially given the priorities that we were focused on, which was actually rolling out the actual department staff to respond to calls, this is one that does have an appearance of lagging, but not so in the sense that it's disrupting any of our ability to provide service.
Very good. All right. And then with regard to the consultant that we're potentially bringing on here, will that consultant be in a position to help us put our ducks in a row in terms of organization?
Yeah, yes. And this is actually the one thing that I think we're going to get a great amount of value out of from beyond perhaps what we could have done ourself because the firm that we're actually selecting does have experience in other cities. They're certainly very familiar with structures in terms of rates and charges and inspection processes and programs. So I actually think we're going to get a good, a broad experience from this contractor that'll help set up our program and customize it to actually what works for us in the city of Victorville.
Okay. And then generally, it's my preference that we have personnel within the city to take care of our organization in our city. And I know that there are times when it's very important to hire outside consultants. Do you envision a time when this could move from an outside consultant to in-house personnel?
The answer is yes. Don't have a timetable for that, but we certainly expect as we get past the focus of where we're at right now in terms of providing the fire and medical service that we are. And once we get the program in place and functioning to where we as a management team even have our arms around it, then certainly we would look at internalizing the bureau.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Madam Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
You ready? Then did you have any questions?
No, I have no questions.
I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 19-020.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. I'm not trusting this administration on this one. Just like the skate park, we ended up with 1.4 million, then adding another 200,000 and ultimately denying another 2.4 million for a $4.5 million skate park. This sounds too untransparent and doubtful. And because it does, it does require administration to relay information clearly and document it where we have steps that should have been transparent. They're very murky in my understanding of what is transpiring now. The city is representing, as a city council, we represent and preserve the public trust and we must be aware of the items that we are passing in terms of public funds. It would be helpful that staff use its memo power to inform the council for any gaps so that when there's something that we doubt, we can refer back to the memo, hey, we did send out the memo. And if you're not doing that, it just makes it very untransparent. And I can't vote for something like this because of what I'm seeing and what I continue to see.
Have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez. Voting no.
We move on to item D3. Lease for Airfield Property in Between the SCLA and the US Air Force. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve entering into the lease for airfield property on former George Air Force Base by and between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and the United States of America Air Force and authorizes the deputy city manager to execute said agreement.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
None. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Rita? Jim?
Yes. Is it foreseeable that the city will attain title to the property located at the George Air Force Base in the near future?
It is anticipated that that property will transfer. I'm not certain how we define in the near future. There's plenty of environmental remediation remaining to be done on behalf of the Air Force. A date certain is not available right now.
And what is the current conversations that are revolving above and beyond in terms of this affirmation issue? Are there any? Any conversations currently taking place? I read your report and I understand that perhaps we could or could not, it's foreseeable and it's not, but I don't know the conversation, so I haven't been there. So are there conversations taking place?
We have conversations on a quarterly basis as a minimum with the Air Force. There are coordination meetings pertaining to how the property is used and quite frankly, just that coordinating of the Air Force's activities with the airport operations specific to transferring of the property. There have been no recent discussions about that whatsoever. I've made it known to the Air Force representatives that we're only prepared to take this property at such times they can give us what's called a FOST, which essentially is an instrument that conveys that property without any blemishes, any environmental blemishes that are beyond that of the circlaw.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, we need a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, I move that the SCLA Board of Directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We move on to item D4. Standard Lease Agreement for Buildings 867 and 867A by and between SCLA-A and Aircraft Recycling Corporation. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve entering into the standard lease agreement by and between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and Aircraft Recycling Corporation for Buildings 867 and 867A. Adopt Resolution Number SCLA-A19-003, amending the fiscal year 1819 budget and authorize the deputy city manager to execute said agreement.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members of staff?
Anyone?
Yes. So if you look on page 204, those are going to be my questions, if you can clarify. And it says, "PART had leased Buildings 867 and 867A from SCLA for the purposes of performing aircraft dismantling to augment ARC's recycling operations at the demolition pad." And then further down, it says, "ARC has been a model SCLA agent." I know we had difficulties in terms of PART and all these issues when it comes to settlement and I'm thinking about COMAV and all these big problems that we have been having. So it just troubles me to hear something and perhaps it's because I'm not in the loop of what conversations and why this PART all of a sudden becomes a model when there was friction between a 20-year-old company that we have at SCLA and now PART potentially, I'm interpreting, has become ARC. So if you can fill in the blanks, what's going on, I just want to understand. I have no beef with this, it's just how the reporting is being done.
Sure, sure. I use the term as a model tenant because during the time period that I have dealt with, particularly Mr. Tom Feddersen, their CEO, who I'd like to introduce in just a moment, during that time period, they've been a model tenant by the way of meeting the requirements of the airport, meeting the rules and regulations, paying their lease rents on time, maintaining insurance certifications. And beyond that, Mr. Feddersen has worked very close with staff to bring current in arrears an amount of nearly $80,000 that arguably he would not have had to have done. That was a tipping point. And he chose to do what I would say is the right thing and he was a model citizen in how he came forward. He negotiated in fair and good faith with us and he brought current to this facility. Even internally, within the facility, he's doing a fine job of maintaining that. I don't compare one tenant to another. As far as I'm concerned, we have several model tenants at the airport. This just happens to be something that I felt was important for the council to know, given the turbulent waters recently with PART. And I'm trying to differentiate that this gentleman here that now owns this company is not the company we did business with in the past. It is a different company. And quite frankly, the management style is altogether different, altogether better from my perspective anyhow.
I appreciate that. Another thing, this is for the Resolution 19-003. If you can explain the date, it says, "And approved on June 19, 2018." I'm sure we're probably dating it for the future, but I don't understand, usually it's typically for the day of. So copies of said budget were prepared and distributed to the Board of Directors of SCLA and approved June 19th. Are we like approving something in the future, doing it today? I don't know. I might see a problem if we're doing something for the future when we haven't done that. I know we've gotten in trouble for certain dates and so I'm just being very precautious to what we're approving today. And if there's an error, please let me know.
You have 30 seconds.
And if there is no error, but this is typical that the city of Victorville approves something in the future, please let me know as well.
I think we refer to the fact that this contract is dated, predated, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes. Given the circumstances of this particular lease, this company has been on-site because of the influx that we were in with this ABC, essentially its bankruptcy with PART, they've been on-site. Typically, we would start a lease after you give us approval for that or we would ask for ratification. In this case, they're already paying us, so therefore, we chose to backdate it. Quite frankly, that picks us up an extra month of a better rent. Part of this new lease was an increase in rent premiums, so we get an extra month of that increase in rent premiums. So it was in our best interest. Madam Mayor, if I might, can I introduce you to?
Yes, definitely.
Mr. Tom Feddersen.
Definitely.
He's a proud employer of 11 people and a growing business right now.
Nice to meet you.
Madam Mayor, pleasure to meet you. Esteemed council members, thank you so much for hearing us today. Appreciate it. I have been in the aviation industry for most of my career, have been very involved in operations, just like the one that we have here. As Eric was explaining, aircraft recycling is a long-term tenant and we've developed, we have the lease on the dismantlement pad, but we've developed a nice little expansion in the occupation of the lease areas on a month-to-month basis. We have 11 employees and their families who live in your community and are very excited about, about, excuse me, about seeing the operation continue and grow and thrive. So it was a pleasure to meet you again. Thank you for your time and attention. If you have any questions, I'm happy, happy to.
Well, I just want to say thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
I would pair out to make a motion because I have no trouble with the tenant coming in with a sublease or a standard lease. What I do have trouble is with the actual dating. We've gotten in trouble in the past as the city of Victorville, I've acknowledged that on multiple occasions. And so if we can make, if I can make a motion and if anybody wants to second it, I would like to take that resolution dated June 19th to April 2nd, which is today's date. And in that regard, that was my motion, but I have further comments after the voting goes through.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I've found the June 19th, 2018 date that's referenced in Resolution 19-003 and it's not inaccurate because the actual date that's in that paragraph or that recital more particularly... or that recital more particularly, is speaking more so related to the budget approval, when the original budget was approved, because in part, what this item is doing is it's adding an additional appropriation, so it's making a citation to when our original budget approval took place, which was June 19, 2018.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Would you like to modify your motion, then, just to have-
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna modify my motion and say as recommended by staff.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to D5. D5, is that correct?
Yes.
Standard lease agreement for building 685C by in between the SCLA A and Auto Aviation Group LLC. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve entering into the standard lease agreement by in between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and Auto Aviation Group for building 685C, and authorize the deputy city manager to execute said agreement.
Thank you. Are there any questions of council members?
None. Thank you.
None. I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, we need a motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the SCLA Board of Directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to public comments. There's a couple speaker cards. And I do have a few cards here. Joe Ficetti, and after Joe, Deanne Hudgens.
I'm Joe Ficetti, and so I hear you're investigating Blanca and what part she had to do with this phony citation that you had issued, okay? She was a witness to say that you're accusing me of poking my fingers in your face. It didn't happen. There was other several witnesses here, in this room, okay? Look at me, don't look over there. And so, in the court, in the restraining order I filed, three of the four times, you didn't show up, okay? The judge took the olive branch, what I offered you before, okay? And having an officer, lying to an officer, is a criminal offense. She's now under investigation with Internal Affairs, and I'm sure they'll contact you, and the witnesses that say it didn't happen, okay? Now, the judge threw out your fees because I didn't cause any harm, your legal fees, okay? And at the time, at the court, your legal fees are right here, with your signature on it, of $1,563. So in the newspaper, it says $18,000. I don't know how you do math, but I'm a mathematician, and there's a big difference between that. Now, the wind has ears, and somebody approached me, which is in this room, and said, "I recently contacted you." Why would I contact you about a dead, I'm sorry, about a dead dog on my property? Why would I contact you? And I didn't have a dead dog on my property, but that's what you stated to somebody. So now, would you like to revisit this restraining order? Because I'm going to do that. So if I were you, I'd straighten it up, because I will go for it, forward with it, and I will, after the Internal Affairs goes, you know, I will press charges against you. What you're doing is not right. And what you're doing-
You have 30 seconds.
Interrupting people and their speech, as you've done every time to me, is a violation, okay? You don't know what you're doing. You really need to step down. But we'll see what happens with this Internal Affairs investigation and lying to a police officer. And I never contacted you about a dead dog. That's a total lie. But if you want to continue, I'll refile the restraining order.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Deanne Hudgens.
Good evening, council. I wanted to remind Councilmember Gomez of her obligations as a council member, as she's seated to represent the entire community. And Councilmember Gomez, I know you have attended numerous conventions, conferences, seminars, as well as having completed basic high school civics and government classes. However, there seems to be a total misunderstanding by you of the role of a council member elected at large. The National League of Cities states, "All at-large members are elected to serve the same constituency," which is the population of a city as a whole. At-large elections favor, I'm sorry, at-large elections favor having council members elected by the entire city because council members in an at-large system can be more impartial, rise above limited perspective of a single district, and concern themselves with problems of a whole community. This is how our council members are supposed to represent our city, Ms. Gomez. This means you, as well as other council members, represent every member of the city of Victorville, not just the ones they determine to be ones that they agree with or who agree with them. Although I did not vote for you, you are obligated by the fact that you were elected in an at-large election to represent me, as well as the citizens in Victorville who did vote for you. Therefore, a majority decision by the council means every member represents that decision. This is basic civics and should not be a difficult concept for a person who chooses to ask the citizens to represent them as a council member. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now Maggie Martin.
Good evening, Your Honor, and fellow council members. Let me just read this article I found recently in a publication. I'm directing it primarily to Ms. Gomez and secondarily to Ms. Ramirez. Okay, can you hear me? Classical historian Victor Davis Hansen writes, "The first coup in US history in which government bureaucrats sought to overturn an election and to remove a sitting US president has failed." As he notes, "The sanctimonious hypocrites of the deep state created a constitutional crisis to destroy a duly-elected president on the, quote, 'premise that they were our moral superiors and had uniquely divine rights to destroy a presidency that they loathed.'" As we know, and I'm going to skip some of this, "As we know, Attorney General Rosenstein appointed his friend Robert Mueller special counsel about the Trump-Russian collusion in the 2016 election, stacking his investigative team with hardcore friends of Hillary Clinton Democrat operatives. Mueller then spent $30 million trying to prove what he knew was a flat-out lie. To see Rachel Maddow almost break down in tears when she realizes Mueller found no Trump-Russian collusion or obstruction of justice was priceless. Yeah. Such a twerp masquerading as a respected journalist is too funny. Not only was she cocksure that somehow President Trump was going to jail, but she bet what was left of her journalistic credibility on the fact she wanted the total, I'm sorry, the totally made-up charges to be true. As the great American philosopher Forrest Gump opined, 'Stupid is as stupid does,' right there. If the American people have learned anything from this witch hunt, it is this: The leftists who have taken over the Democratic Party are crazy. Ocasio-Cortez, Omar Tilly, memorial Nancy, corrupt Nadler, and it goes on. Bernie Sanders, hardcore Stalinist, all wanted President Trump indicted because it just had to be true. We still have the presumption of innocence in this country unless you're a Republican, a conservative, or a man named Donald Trump and Brett Kavanaugh. Some have called this "the greatest political scandal of the country, a coup concocted by agents of the Democratic Party, aided and embedded by their friends in the fake media." Fellow Never Trumpers and agents of President Obama's-
You have 30 seconds.
-National Intel Service. These people are a real danger to the United States as established by our founding fathers. I'm looking at all of you, founding fathers, who rolling over in their graves right now. They have blatantly manipulated what they knew were lies and peddled them for over two years as facts to a gullible public desperate to confirm their own worldview and hatred of President Trump. Quote, "Truth is generally the best vindication against slander," Abraham Lincoln. Thank you.
Ramiro Rodriguez?
Well, you say tomato, the other person says tomato. However you want to see the responsibility of each of you, council persons representing the populace, I guess it's up to you. However you deem it's more important to represent the population. I know there's a census going to come up and be counted, but what does it matter if we're counted but not counted correctly? Me, myself, I'm born here in Los Angeles, my dad in Mexico, my mom in Mexico. They're stamped as Caucasians in my birth certificate, so right away, boom, three white people. The population of Victorville states officially that it's 81% white and 17% black. Where are the Hispanics? I don't care how they classify me. The thing is, a lot of services are missing out for this minority. A lot of businesses don't come up here because they don't see a Hispanic population. So what if we're counted? Will they knock on our door and they say, "One more person right there"? But they don't classify us correctly. What good is that? It's like gerrymandering the population. Blanca is representing the 55% Hispanics that live up here, the percentage. That's the population. Maybe 65% in 2020, when they have the complete count, 17% white. Compared to 10 years ago, 75% white. And like I said before, 3% are leaving, the white population is leaving the city of Victorville. That's what caused Mr. Kennedy to get up and walk away, said he never heard anything more racist. I'm just quoting the demographics that are online, on census. Now, you go to the school boards, and you go to the liquor companies and the corporations, and they have a more correct demographics, because they have to cater to certain people. Beer companies have better demographics than the census do, because they have to know what beers to sell to the clientele. So what I'm saying, you guys represent the population. Blanca's representing the major population that's here, 55%. We don't have any Hispanic holidays, no nothing. You guys don't want to do anything to recognize that we're here. We're that cousin that you want nobody to know about. Why? We haven't had any Hispanic celebrations here since 2014? What happened? They saw the numbers-
30 seconds.
Last time I was over here, it took a tilt. Everybody was getting along fine. Why don't we have any celebrations? Why don't we actually recognize that Victorville is a majority Hispanic population, and don't go based on what you read in the census counts? That is the biggest lie. And thank you, Blanca, for representing us and sticking up for us. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Those are all the cards that I have. So now I will have our city manager give us a report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Just a couple of items, community activity items to discuss. So first, coming up is our Community Cleanup Day. That's our big event where we gather community members to literally help clean up the community. That's between the hours of 8:00 and 12:00, I'm sorry, 8:00 AM and 12:00 PM, Saturday, April 13. You can register still online at victorvilleca.gov/CCU. Then also, we've got the Spring Festival and Egg Hunt coming up. That's Saturday, April 20, from 10:00 AM in the morning to 3:00 PM at Hook Community Center. Mission to the event is free. That's our annual egg hunt for the kids. And then, finally, I think I just got to give a recognition to our fire chief. He's gotten some good coverage as to the transition. We did go live 8 o'clock in the morning this last Saturday. Your chief put together a very clear, very thorough incident action plan. I talked and joked with him a little bit afterwards, suggesting that it felt like we overplanned for the event, because it went so smooth, the transition did. And I'm just proud to be able to recognize Chief Benson for his efforts. It was an amazing leadership effort on his part, to where we were able to actively jump in and take over without significant incident, and we're actively providing fire service as the city of Victorville now. So with that, thank you, Greg, and good luck on running the department.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I think the benefit was all of the work that was done beforehand, all of the firefighters that participated in their hard work, as well as all the internal and external stakeholders that assisted us, all the way from community services to IT, to fleet, public works, HR, finance, all of that work came to fruition on Saturday in its smooth transition. Many of the external groups that helped us, such as Apple Valley Fire, Chino Fire, excuse me, AMR, the Sheriff's Office assisted, and we had agencies such as Confire and ISMA providing support and assisting us. So when you have that strong partnership and you have a plan, we were able to make that transition very, very smoothly. But I really want to give recognition to everybody that transitioned that within the city and within the fire department, our external stakeholders as well.
Thank you. After that, it just makes up for the unpleasantness that we deal with sometimes. Thank you. Okay, we move on to E3, Councilmember Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Items for the Upcoming City Council Agenda. And let me see, I'll start with Ms. Jones.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to see about placing a matter on the agenda, the time at which would certainly be at the discretion, if the council approves it, of the city manager at a time that would be most responsive to the other priorities of the day. I'm looking to see if the council would be interested in having a preliminary discussion and action regarding setting a workshop on governance team relations. Without going into too much detail, I'd be interested in a facilitated workshop on governance team relations to discuss the council's role and responsibilities as they partner with the city manager to accomplish the business of the city and to build a more positive governance culture. And so I would like to make that as my motion, to host a, to have an agenda item for preliminary discussion and action regarding setting a workshop.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I have.
Do you have something?
Yes, I'm very concerned about public safety and traffic. It just seems to me that out there- It just seems to me that out there on Bear Valley, Miss Gwali, and all the other major roads, people are traveling far too fast, and the safety of our residents are at heart. And I would like to put for discussion on the agenda, the public safety of our residents and the possibility of working with the county regarding additional police enforcement of some nature, because lives are precious. And I think, simply said this way, my personal opinion is, we need more police on the street to slow down the traffic and save lives. And I wish that we would at least discuss the question of how can we prevent what's going on? People are going through red lights without a care. And I find out that you need to wait at a green light before you even start because your life is on the line. And this bothers me immensely, because I love this city, and I certainly do love all the people, and I would want to do something possible to save someone's life if it was possible. Thank you. So my motion is, I would like to put on the agenda, public safety.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Protem Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
I do have a question, though. Is this, so I'm fine if the council wants to put this on the agenda, but is this something that we would typically take up during budget discussions?
I'm sorry, it certainly could be, but certainly wouldn't hurt at all to have the conversation in advance of the budget discussion. So if there's some sense we can get from the council as to policy changes, then we could roll those right into it.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Did you have anything else? Did you have something?
For the agenda?
Yes. Ms. Gomez?
Yes, I've found out by many businesses complaining that the water and the trash are stuck into one, so if they don't pay the water or the trash, there's a lien. Several complaints from small businesses have stated that it would be best to have the water and the trash separated. So on behalf of their voice, I'm sure they'll be coming in the future, I'd like to agendize talking about and doing a possible action in terms of what are the impacts or the facilitations for our businesses when they don't have water and trash, especially for our restaurants.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
The second thing is, community services doesn't get much of the pie in terms of finances, and so it would be beneficial that the community have a specific fund. For instance, if the council agendizes discussions of a fund category for community services, it would be separate from general fund for parks and library resources. We had a survey not too long ago, it's always our police that get most of the money, but when it comes to community service, they're not even anywhere near. So you can look at dilapidated parks and any recreations and services for teenagers and anybody who is in the ability and physically can actually exercise. So I would like to agendize just the possible discussion and taking action of a potential separate fund for community services. All their money seems to be withdrawn mostly from the general fund.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
The second thing that I'd like to see, and I've been talking to several community stakeholders, I'd like to get other council members involved in making this census count for our city by considering forming a complete count committee. So I've already archived with the city clerk documents from different organizations that are working with this. This committee would be made of volunteers from all walks of life, including community leaders and government officials, to motivate residents to respond to the census questionnaire and to promote the importance of every person to be counted. If no one was aware of the census 2020, it depends on community involvement at every level, and that's why it's a complete count committee that's essential, an essential tool to help us. So for this, it would at least require a second and then one other person to be able to talk about and make actions pertaining to the census 2020.
Is there a second?
I'm going to second that for purpose of discussion.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Yes.
Yes.
My understanding is that the federal census is conducted by the federal government and that it is not our responsibility. We had an individual who talked about the misinformation, but it doesn't come from the city, which is exactly why they do do a census every 10 years. And my understanding is that somewhere along the line, the official organizations will be involved in this, calling for people to help and submit this information, this information I just got tonight. And at first, I looked at it and said, "Complete count committee, we need to," I thought, "we need to get involved." But if you read it, it's an advocacy position, opposition to citizenship questions and so on. So until we have time, until I have time to look at this, I suggest that we are going to be involved. And if we need to be involved, we invite the people who are officially involved as required by the state and federal government, not advocacy groups. I don't know where we're headed. We've got a lot of division in this community purposely by people for reasons I don't understand. We don't need to add to it. The discussion, I think, is good. I think we need to be careful on who we include on that. I mean, anybody can be included, but not because of papers like this.
For the purposes of discussion that we have had, I'm going to call the question so we can actually vote on this item, because those papers that are in front of you are actually a national institution that not only has California, but Connecticut, New York, New Jersey, and just, I understand your position, but I would like...
This is a motion to call the question, it should be just to end debate, so we need a second on the motion to call the question.
I already motioned it, so...
Yeah, we need a second.
I think there was a second.
Not to call the question, she's calling the question.
There's no second, that motion fails, so you can continue to discuss it.
So I do have a question or two, or comments. May I, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, all right. So I think you're, Councilmember Cox, you're looking at this packet of information?
It didn't come from the city.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, I think this didn't come from the city, I think it came from a fellow council member. Okay, so this is the first time I've sat behind the dais and have had to deal with the census. So Mr. Mr., does the council typically get involved with this? Does the city typically get involved with this in terms of encouraging residents to participate in the census? Is there anything on our website typically? How does that, what does that usually look like?
Our role is, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor and members of the council, yeah, our role is fairly passive. There is certainly a leadership role at the federal level and perhaps a leadership role at the state level. Ours is largely responsive to where we do provide information, development-related information, and will also help get the word out. But really, that's effectively been our role traditionally, and Item C3 in the agenda kind of lays that out a little bit about what the expectations are of the city. So I'd say certainly not leadership, definitely passive and cooperative, and getting the word out is probably the best way to characterize our role.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Excuse me, now is this for what, for just discussion, or what are we?
This is a motion to put this on the next agenda.
To put it on the, for discussion only?
Yes, for discussion only.
No action or nothing, because we can't do anything?
Correct, it's a motion to put this census issue on the next agenda for discussion.
For discussion and possible action.
Action.
And possible action, that's what the motion is.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
No.
All those opposed?
No.
No?
No.
That motion fails.
Now we move on to reports from council members.
I'm not finished with my agendas. So the next thing is policymakers are looking for ways to discuss increasing the supply of affordability in housing. For that reason, I would like the city council to consider discussion and possible action in creating an ordinance that addresses accessory dwelling units, ADUs. This option would be a lower cost option than the traditional market rate construction that is constructed in residential areas. Such dwelling units can be attached or detached from the primary resources. So I would need a second to consider discussion and possible action in creating an ordinance that addresses accessory dwelling units in the city of Victorville.
Madam Mayor, if I might, we had just, as a council, considered that and approved that in the last meeting, or two meetings ago, I'm not exactly recalling specifically, but we did approve that, and it's probably going through the appeal period right now before it actually becomes law.
It is.
Would you please supply me with a copy of that? I would greatly appreciate it. The next thing is, I would like the support of at least two council members in discussing and taking action on creation of working with organizations to create an age-friendly community. By creating a resolution, we can acknowledge and address the looming shifts in our older adult populations. Seniors, stakeholders, teens, and other groups equally would like to see that the city engages in an age-friendly action plan. If any of you attend the monthly regional meetings on aging in Victorville, you may become aware that the challenges that our seniors 55 and up face are only increasing. So I'm looking for the support of at least two other council members to add discussion and possible action of an age-friendly action plan in the city by adopting a resolution that creates an age-friendly city.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
The next thing is, the reconciliation register is attached for the public's view. I'm speaking about the commercial demands, however, the public doesn't have any of this. So access to the commercial demands that are detailed in description, which is more than 72 hours in meetings, are detailed for the community's consumption, but yet they don't have access to it. I'm the only council member that receives it, and I would like at least two other council members to have access to the details that I am privy to. I would like to agendize this for discussion or just have my colleagues have the same access as I do, because I am the only one that currently looks at the budget in terms of detail.
Is there a second? There being no second?
You know, I'm going to second, just because I need to make a comment on that. I think it's an unfair statement to state for any council member to allege that he or she is the only person that looks at the agenda with details in mind. It's simply not factual.
Yes, it was, I'm going to say that you didn't understand my question, but I can show you what I mean.
Okay.
It's not that you're not, you don't have what I have, because I've requested this portion, and I know at one point we had said yes, but we took it away, because giving it to two other council members would get accessibility to the general public. So I can show you what I mean when I'm looking at the detailed version.
Sure, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Because a lot of council members said, "It's too thick," and it is, it's a lot of information.
I'm just looking at the reconciliation register, and that's pretty detailed. I mean, it has the vendor information and the check information. If that's what you were talking about, the commercial.
I, like I said, I will show you, and if you have it, beautiful, that means that the public also has it.
Sure.
The other thing is MAP.
Well, we have to take, is there a second?
I think I seconded that just so that I could make a comment, but I'm going to withdraw it.
You'll withdraw your second?
I do.
Okay. That motion fails?
So for the MAP, discussion about MAP and how it facilitates or impacts our community residents. I have had several residents who are disgruntled and feel used for their money. We, as a council, should discuss implementation of a resolution that tailors to our residents who use the MAP program, because it seems like it's hindering, I don't know if it's hindering or if it's helping, but it's my perception from the storylines that I'm getting from the general public, that it's actually hindering them. There's liens that go on their properties, and they are assuming that they're going to fall off after 10 years. This is something that the council representatives need to be closely aware. We receive one side of administrative narrative, but on the other side, we don't necessarily hear what the repercussions are, unless we become aware of solutions, workshops, or any layman terms explications that are given to our community residents rather than technical jargon that I too have received from administration. My motion is to agendize a discussion of resolutions, awareness of the MAP program, and how it impacts former and current MAP program users. The discussion and the action will be based on data and analysis that allow for community input. The residents being affected need to discuss openly, and we need to understand how they're feeling about this first home buyer program that is being implemented to assist them, but they think it's rather not assisting. And I've submitted a letter today of the interaction of how this individual particularly thinks that MAP is not helping. She feels like she's been gypped, and if that's the issue, I think we need at least recognize, and that's why I'm trying to add this to the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'm going to second because I have a question, I want to make sure that I understand what's being requested. Is this to have a discussion to better inform our community about the actual program, or is it to bring a case about a particular community member?
My intention is, administration has one perspective, and the community seems to have a different. After 10 years, if I have individuals saying, "It's not helping, I thought it was going to drop off," I don't know if we're doing a disservice by not explaining in layman terms what's happening, but if there's a program that's helping, I just want to understand both sides. I don't just want to understand the perspective of administration, I want to understand how it's affecting the individuals that are actually doing the MAP program. And if there's something that we can do to create a resolution to maximize it for the next group of people, I think it's our duty to be able to listen to what they're going through.
There was a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? All those opposed?
Will abstain.
The motion passes.
The next one is, the city of Victorville contract, and mind you, this next one is very sensitive, and it's not my voice, I'm going out into the community, so please, if I offend you, I'm just letting you know that I'm talking to the residents, and I need to make that clear, because this is about our police force. So the city of Victorville contracts with county for sheriff services. We pay our bill to the county, and the district is represented by Robert Lovinggood and elected official John McMahon. I'm hurt to know that this city has continued sheriff officers who abuse their power in uniform. Today again, I would be remiss if I did not voice residents concerned about a few of these apples that are really taking their power to the next level. Two weekends ago, there was a man of color who was not only harassed by beaten, but beaten by a Victorville sheriff's officer, mind you, he's a senior, a black man. Three years ago, a woman seeking justice was sexually assaulted by former sheriff Carl Smith, who shared that he had immunity from prosecution because of his title. Duncan Hicks, our Victorville Police Sheriff's Officers, was harassed by Mr. Bradburn Michael, and there was a settlement in that, and that's in the city of Victorville.
Is this in the agenda item?
Yes, it is, in the early 90s, and that's why I'm contextualizing, because it's, I don't just want to say, "Let's add this," I'm giving you context, and this is an item. And if you want to support it, you're more than welcome, if you don't, I'm trying to build a case why I'm bringing it up. In the early 90s, Victorville Police Station had a sheriff officer by the names of Niels Benson, who started a clique of 19 other officers who initiated a phase, was to beat a black man in order for these other 19 to be into the clique. Now he's the Hisparia City Manager and the second-in-command in the neighboring cities, also part of the Sharks' clique. Today again, as the voice of the people, in my position as a government official, and as that council, considering discussions and action to propose a resolution and a contract that allows for all Victorville sheriffs that are contracted, they require body cams. This has been asked in the past. Any body cams that have been done were in Apple Valley, and I believe it was the city of Highland as a pilot program. We have not seen them here, we're spending $25 million. And the reason this was so lengthy is because the voices keep coming. Every week, I hear something, and it, I don't know what to do but to tell city council, "Go out there and start listening to the voices, I'm not here to attack the police force." That's why I said a few bad apples, and this is coming from the community. That's why I want to agendize something like this, because we need to start listening, every single one of us council members. And again, I don't have anything about the police force, I'm listening to these voices, and I need to bring them to the dais. And that's my motion, to bring in camera, body cams for everyone in the police force that is in the city of Victorville that we contract, that has public contact.
Okay, so for purposes of clarification, it's not to actually do that, it's to have a discussion and possible action regarding that?
Right, body cams.
Is there a second? Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
And that was all.
Did you have something to agendize? Oh, you already did.
Which was on E3 still?
Yeah.
No, I'm done.
Well, I am going to request to agendize how many items we can actually attempt to agendize per meeting. This is getting to be a little bit too much per meeting. This is for discussion at our next meeting or the one following, but this is just to discuss how many items we can bring forward to agendize. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Is it the purpose of the motion to put a limitation?
Put a limitation on how many items.
Well, we have a limitation, okay, never mind.
Do we have a limitation now?
Well, we have a limitation on time.
Yeah, but how many items?
No limitation on time.
Not on time with respect to adding items to the agenda.
Well, okay. I'm going to second this, and I may withdraw the second. I'm going to second it because I've commented. This is a time where we have possible action items, and if you have action items, these can be submitted. It would really be helpful. Councilmember would simply put it in writing and distribute it to council before so we have an idea of what we're looking at. For example, we had a request tonight to put an item on the agenda we just handled. We also had a lot of discussion in regard to the contract with the sheriff department. We have a budget coming up, we'll discuss that. I would like to get realistic about this, and if it's necessary to put a time limit on how many, you know, that if an individual has three important items, or four, or five, I'd feel real bad about putting a limit on it. On the other hand, every meeting, we have seven, eight, nine items that don't get on the agenda, and the makers know it's not going to get on the agenda. So I'm not sure of the purpose of this, so maybe we do, it's time to have a discussion on this, so. I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yeah, I'd like to actually make a substitute motion on that. So I'd like to have an agenda item whereby we discuss the number, length of time, et cetera, on agenda items being added, but whether or not it's permissible for the items to continue to be brought back for request to be placed on the agenda.
Is there a second?
May I have a question? I see that the limitations of items to be an infringement of the First Amendment, freedom of speech. If it was a question of time, that's a total different matter, but when you restrict a person on the question of what they have to say, then we're attacking democracy and attacking the U.S. Constitution. I would commend the item to say time rather than the number of items.
I don't have a problem with that.
I just don't know what difference that would make constitutionally, but I do think it's a legitimate question to come up in the discussion that we would have on the agenda, whether it, if any limitations create a constitutional issue.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Jones. Is there a second?
Was that for a time limit?
It was, the substitute motion was essentially the original motion with the addition of dealing with the question as to whether or not once an item has been denied being placed on the agenda, if it can be brought back, and if so, how many times? For the same request?
Well, I'm, I want to ask for clarification. I seconded that for discussion because the question that I've asked before, if a person brings something up and they don't get a second, they can bring it up at the next meeting. If it doesn't get a second, they can bring it up the second meeting. There have been times when I've agreed to have the discussion, knowing that it's destined to fail so we can end the discussion and have it discuss that every single meeting, but I guess we need to have that clarified too.
That would be, that would be consistent with Councilmember Jones's motion that's on the table right now, to have that discussion.
And so my comment is, it's really interesting because I know Mrs. Jones, and I know Mr. Cox, and I know Garcia are talking about me, clearly.
I'm talking about you.
I mean, there's, oh no, I'm the only one that happens to bring a lot of agendized items. I mean, I know it's for the record, you want to say no, but you know, it's known. I mean, we breathe it in the air, it's obvious. But anyways, my thing was, you cannot limit any one person to say, "You cannot bring the same thing again, and again, and again." I mean, you have no capacity in terms of even being a charter. So, but we can talk about that because if I wanted to say the same thing over and over and over during my allotted time, there is no policy in the world that would stop me from doing that. The only thing that could stop me from doing something at the dais is being unelected. And I have till 2020, and I can continue to use my voice in terms of doing that, and I still have the right as an individual, if I chose to do so, to get over here at that podium and as an individual, ask the city council, because I get represented by each one of you as well, even though I probably didn't vote for many or most of you, with the exception of one person. But what I'm saying is, we're getting into these little nuances where we're not dealing with city business that affects our residents because we're so busy looking at what one council member potentially can be doing to gain a next election. And when we're elected, we want to make sure that we're servicing the community. We're not, I agree with Mrs. Jones that we need to come together and work. I don't have to agree with all of you, but I don't dislike any of you. As a matter of fact, if Mrs. Garcia asked me for a cup of water, I would gladly in front provide her a glass of water because I have nothing against her. I have nothing against Mr. Cox. If something were wrong and he'd call me and he needed a ride, I would be there within a split moment because that's the type of person I am, even though you'll see me voicing opinions that we disagree, but I still appreciate each one of them. They're very valuable in my sense, in my head. I have nothing against them, even though you might think that's what's going on. It's not. These are people, later on, we're going to see each other again. But anyways, that's all I wanted to share. That was my comment.
I think we have a substitute motion by Councilmember Jones. We're looking for a second, and my understanding of the substitute motion is that it would include a discussion as to whether or not items that have been on the agenda would be able to continue to appear on the agenda.
If items that had been requested to be on the agenda, if that was denied, if it can come back. So just a broad discussion. I want to make sure that we're within our constitutional.
Right. So is there a second for that substitute motion?
Yes.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
And everyone has already spoken.
Now we're back to the original motion? Or is that?
No, the substitute took care of the original motion.
Took care of it? Okay.
So now we move on to E4. These are reports from council members. I'll start with Ms. Gomez.
As a council-
This is a three-minute, three-minute time limit.
As a council member of the city of Victorville, I attended a two-day conference just a few days ago in Long Beach regarding water policy. This organization is the WELLS, which stands for Water for Elected Latino Leaders. This conference had over 200 elected officials. This provided the electeds to understand the dynamic of California water in order to assure clean water for communities in terms of affordability, safety, and accessibility. Topics addressed were as follows: the future of California human rights to water, and the smart growth in the face of water stress. Ahora para aquellos que observan, el gobierno desde su casa y como audiencia, quiero platicarles que hace unos cuantos días atendí una conferencia en Polisah cerca del agua aquí en California el estado. Tuve el placer de conocer a otros oficiales del gobierno y de varios condados también. Hablamos de la importancia del agua y cómo el acceso al agua es importante para toda humanidad. Quiero que sepan que la comunidad hispana, que yo como regidora estoy escuchando su voz, y apoyo y aprecio mucho las labores y todas las áreas de nuestra humanidad. Si gustan contactarme, mi número es el área 760 912 3190. De nuevo, mi número para contactarme es 760 912 3190. Pueden contar conmigo y recuerden que la unión hace la fuerza. LaShonda deserves to be lauded for her courtesy in negotiations and helping businesses with time extensions and the quick service connections. Thanks to her, LaShonda, a worker and employee here, she was able to assist a small business owner, restaurant owner, by feeling empowered. They were able to reconnect the water immediately and actually went through and gave them an extension of a couple of days, which is very rare for the city to do. So thank you again for the whole department to continue to value our water customer service in respect of giving them that leniency that's required when they're able to show that they can't make that right payment at that time. And making a difference does create in our community a sense of found hope, so I appreciate for LaShonda. I witnessed that firsthand, so I would be remiss if I did not laud LaShonda for her efforts.
I recently attended the League of California Studies Meeting in Costa Mesa, and one of the things that was pretty evident is that the state of California is changing fairly dramatically in regard to a lot of the social issues. It's something that we're going to be facing here. There are advocates that there should be free housing, free health, free education, and also that somehow people are entitled to a livable income whether they work or not. There are more and more people who are advocating that, that are getting elected to the state offices and getting elected to the federal offices, and, you know, it's great if you can afford it. I can't, but it's up to you. Things are changing. We need to face reality on that. In regard to the census, I keep seeing on billboards, advertising, I got mailers, also see information. I hope the manager will keep the council abreast of what's occurring. There ought to be a count absolutely of every individual. I'm very aware that we have a large Hispanic community. When I ran in 2016, I was told it was about 52.8%. I counted on that since many of my friends and my family are Hispanic, and I'm sure that's why I got more than 1,000 votes, more than Placa, because of Hispanic vote. So thank you for being aware of that. And, you know, for the people who like to push those items, I hope and pray that they do it in a sense of bringing the community together, that we're all human, we all want the same thing. We want good government for the city, for our friends and neighbors and our children, not divisiveness, but be aware. And I'm not pointing this to any particular individual. There are a lot of people who are taking advantage of the divisiveness to promote their own goods, and we as a community have to stand up and make sure that doesn't happen. Too good of a community to let that happen. So I attended the meetings. When I get the minutes from the meeting, I'll distribute those because there are some strange things that are beginning to happen at the league and also the Mountain Desert Committee of the League, which is one of the divisions, is almost diametrically opposed to most of the things that the league is doing now. So we do have finally come to pass, as predicted, the coastal areas and the inland areas are becoming extremely divisive and stand for different things, and we have to be-
You have 30 seconds?
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, well, since our last meeting, I've attended meetings at VBWRA, VIDA, and I also attended the Rock in Our Disabilities Community Workshop regarding federal and state laws as they pertain to educational IEPs and how to advocate during those meetings. We have a growing population, we do across our state, of individuals with disabilities, and I applaud this organization for really reaching out to parents of children and adults with special needs. Also, I was very blessed to attend the extravaganza put on by the Victor Valley Rescue Mission. It was quite a lovely event. Mayor Garcia was also there, and we had members from our fire department that were there, members from the sheriff department were there, a lot of community members, and it was such a sight to see all the wonderful children having a good time with their colorful bags, going to the different booths and getting treats. It was a wholesome time for family and quite a lovely thing to see in our community. Also, I made a point to be here at City Hall at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday morning when our fire department formally transitioned over to Victorville. County Fire transitioned over to Victorville. I did bring donuts. I'd be interested to know how many Captain Bessenger took away from the fire department. But it was, it was such a blessing to be there, and I'm very fortunate in that I was in the audience when all the hard work was being done to transition to Victorville Fire Department. I'm simply riding on the coattails of all the hard work of my colleagues. So it was, it was a great time to be there. Everyone was calm, but there was this definitely, the waiting with bated breath for the first call that might come in, and some very calm but definite excitement in the room. Again, Chief Benson, thank you for the wonderful work that you're doing to make sure that the members of our community are safe. And I attended again today the AB 1234 Ethics Training. I had already met the requirement, but I thought it important that I attend this because-
You have 30 seconds?
Thank you. There was value in all of the members of our council attending the same training at the same time with the same presenter so that we can all be on the same page, and that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Vida?
Yes, I would like to thank the Victorville City Council for the certificate of commemoration for El Cinco de Mayo. This was a battle of Puebla that was won and lost, but it led to faith and freedom of a nation, and also it led to a Mexican constitution that was modeled after the American constitution because the first president was so overwhelmed and inspired by his studies in America that he had to bring the love of democracy to Mexico. And this is the reason why El Cinco de Mayo is celebrated, for it defeated Spain and brought freedom to a nation that was to be modeled after the United States. And I thank the city council for that commemoration and that certificate. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jones, thank you so much for actually going over the extravaganza, the extravaganza. That was really, really amazing and a lot of fun, and I am so sorry that I was not here Saturday morning for the transition from county fire to our local fire department, but at my age, I still work six and seven days a week, so I think I applaud myself. And Robert, you are here, and I just want everyone to acknowledge the fact that our planning commissioner, Robert Harriman, is here in the audience. And I want to publicly apologize to you, the afternoon or evening that you were actually appointed to the planning commission, you were very unfairly accused of being racist and slandered, I am sorry to say, by Mayor Proton Rida Ramirez. And I know that, I know you, and I know your family, and the accusations are false, and I'm sorry that it brought a lot of hurt and embarrassment to you, your wife, who was present, and your family. But I, as mayor, want to publicly apologize to you, your wife, and your family for the embarrassment it caused and the defamation of character, which I know you do not deserve. The least that I can do, because I cannot undo what has already been done, but I want to publicly apologize to you, and I just want to say congratulations and welcome to the, and thank you for your appointment to the planning commission, and I want to welcome you with open arms, and I just want to say, I know who you are, I know your character, and I'm actually sorry that you had to go through that. Thank you. And this meeting is adjourned. And this meeting is adjourned.